So John, Lisa, and all the representatives from Public Safety, please join us up front. I will turn things over to Commissioner Echol for a little bit on Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. So tonight we are honoring Burlington County's longest-serving employees, Captain John DeLuca, who is retiring after forty-three years of Central Communications in the Department of Public Safety. Captain DeLuca got his start as a Public Safety Telecommunicator Trainee in nineteen eighty. As a reference point, Jimmy Carter was president at the time and Star Wars: The Empire Strikes Back with the top dressing room in the nation. I'm sure you appreciate this. He received his telecommunicator certification in nineteen eighty-two and became a Central Communications Lieutenant and Senior Public Safety Telecommunicator in nineteen eighty-eight. He was promoted to Captain and Supervising Public Safety Telecommunicator in nineteen ninety-three. By then, Bill Clinton was in the White House and Jurassic Park was the number one movie of the box. During his four decades of service, Central Communications has built millions of nine-one-one calls and dispatched first responders to countless incidents. They also provided critical communications during major events such as the blizzard of nineteen ninety-six, Hurricane Floyd, the July two thousand and four floods, and Superstorm Sandy and more. Captain DeLuca has devoted his time and experience to the safety and welfare of Burlington County residents, but as our county's lead emergency medical dispatch instructor, he's also made sure the next generation of telecommunications are prepared to do the same. Our board would like to thank him for his exemplary service and all our Public Safety telecommunications and support staff for what they do every day. Captain DeLuca, thank you so much for all of your service, for everything you have done in the line of your duty and the excerpt in your duty. I'm sure you've been dedicated extremely for all of so much work. It's my pleasure to present you with this certificate. And the board can wish you a pose for a photo. Awesome. You did well. For all of your time that you've been doing. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words?
I think the weather was the same back in nineteen eighty. But it's been a long road and I'm very happy to have chosen this career. At the time, I was a fire chief and had the opportunity to take the police test and so forth. I got promoted from the county, so I said, well, when I stay here, I could ace of all of it. A little setback years ago, but came back after that. And it's been interesting and exciting and I got to play in a lot of different roles, beginning with training, IT work, you know, with different phone systems, radio systems. I've been at it over the years. It's never been better than it is now. And the technology's always changing. It's been harder and harder for everybody. Really getting hard to keep people from different generations. It's hard to get people to work at the time, but I've got a good crew where they are. And I hope, you know, I get to live it, that I see things continuing in the direction of going, because I haven't seen that in a really long time. It's really great for the county.
Thank you for saying that, please, for us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Briggs. I'm the acting chief right now while Chris Carroll is out. So I just want to say it's been an honor and privilege to work with John for many years. You know, when he first started his career, I was three years old, just to make him feel a little bit older. But John's helped me out a lot in my career. We've been working together for the twenty-one years that I've been at the Communication Center. We now do a lot of things together. Him and I handle the EMD classes and get them going. And John's passing that on to me, lucky me, because it's a lot of work to do. Other things that John's been involved in, he's big with the upgrades in the radio system. When we first moved from the basement at the Communication Center up to the first floor, that was back when he had his setback, but he was instrumental in getting us, you know, from the basement up to the floor into the center we're in now. And then, you know, a few years ago, we upgraded the center again. John was big in helping us get that all squared away. And he's just, he's always there when we need him and he's always been there doing things that we need him to do. So, you know, I'm gonna miss him because he's right down the hall from me. He's always someone I can go bounce things off of, helps me settle some of the frustration that goes on in the center. So I know, speaking for the director and the rest of the employees at Central, we will miss him a lot. And we wish him luck and make sure you come back to visit.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Echol, and congratulations again, John. We wish you the very best on your retirement. We will now move on to public hearing for Resolution two zero two-three dash zero 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 five. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the resolution. Aaron, please read the title.
Resolution two zero two-three dash zero 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 five to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on Resolution number two zero two-three dash zero 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 five? Luz, how are you?
Good.
Yes.
All right. And I want to say Happy New Year and glad I'm back. I want, first thing I want to say is thank you to the person who direct me for having front row. I've become the reord me. I want to say that thanks to that very person for doing that. That would be so kind of that person. And how did the budget, had it been increased or?
No, so this is just a resolution authorizing us to use our cap bank. So this has nothing to do with the budget. This is actually putting money away that was not used.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else for a public comment on Resolution two zero two-three dash zero 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 five? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution number two zero two-three dash zero 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 five? So I'm the second reading. Probably move to second. Aaron, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Echol?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Yes.
Deputy Director Polian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sane?
Yes.
Director Hobson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will now move on to public comments on agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics will have a chance to do so later in the meeting. When it is your turn to speak, please state your full name and the address, and your address for the record. As a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion. Do we have anyone for public comments on agenda items? I see one person's name. Gary Ber- Berbium or Baimium?
Close enough.
I apologize. How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Berberian.
Yes, please. Join us at the mic.
Okay, great. Thanks. Gary Berberian, one thirty-eight Winstead in West Hampton Township. Public comment on just the three items here on the agenda, but if I can, I just preface it by congratulating Captain DeLuca. Congratulations, Captain DeLuca. On Resolution I fifteen. My question is, I did go to the website to pull down the agenda, but I didn't see any of the underlying documents about this. And I guess my question is, I'm asking if you can, just give us some context around what the quote jurisdictional agreement is. That would be helpful for me to understand a little bit. I can move to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. I sixteen, the agreement with the, I don't know, is it any TT? Is it meta?
Meta.
Meta, okay. Again, some context around what that agreement is would be helpful. And because I'm in West Hampton Township, I'm just wondering, was there a fiscal impact statement sort of packaged together with that as it impacts sort of the township itself in West Hampton? If you can provide context around that, appreciate it. And then I twenty-nine, just caught my eye only because University of Nebraska is probably a thousand plus miles away and I'm just hoping to provide some context as to the agreement with the University of Nebraska as opposed to some university here in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina, do you want to talk about the jurisdictional agreement? I don't want to get you wrong.
Actually, if we could skip to I twenty-nine just briefly, I would just ask for, is it Gary?
Yes, there was you.
So regarding I twenty-nine, we often enter into agreements with different universities for students that can be interns with different departments. So the student could be a resident of New Jersey or Burlington County specifically, but they're a student at a university in a different state, but they could be here either for summer break or even just a short winter break. And they, they come and they, they work, not, not for money, but they're quote as almost a volunteer and they, they work in a different department just to get experience. So I think maybe it caught your eye because it was far away, but it's a student that lives in the area that's in internship in a specific department. So that, that, that's the first one. And Steve, can you speak to the jurisdictional agreement?
Yeah, would I come up there?
No, I have to defer to Mr. Sapinski for that one.
That's fine, as long as we can hear you, Jim.
So the jurisdictional agreement is along Cedar Lane. And basically what it is, is the developer on a piece of property along Cedar Lane, as part of their planning board approval, is going to install a roundabout. We will take ownership of the roundabout once it's completed and approved. And the jurisdictional agreement will basically realign our responsibility of Cedar Lane and take it all the way up through one thirty, because as part of the roundabout, the junk handle off of one thirty will be removed.
And regarding the Greenwood Netta Architects, they were picked from a pool of different architects to work on a project they're working on in West Hampton. I'm not sure what you mean regarding a fiscal agreement as an impact on the township, because we are paying Netta Architects out of our county budget. It doesn't have an impact on West Hampton specifically, because it's not costing West Hampton. It's costing the county.
Can we provide more clarity? Do you need more clarity, sir?
The county is paying Netta Architects for this project.
Thanks, dear.
Well, your time is up. Well, yeah, your time is up. That's why I said we'll.
Sir, I could talk to you after and give you more questions.
Yeah. All right. Do we have any other comments on agenda items? I didn't have it.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if you were raising your hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion in your phone.
I agree. Agenda item I twenty, can you send that to me first?
Oh, yes. So this is, this is just, so we're going to have a cooperative agreement to do some exercise with the.
Okay. And Resolution I, just I nine and I three.
I nine and I three?
Yeah.
Do you have people in the streets listening?
Sure.
This is just, it's just about our party.
Oh, sure. I nine?
I nine and I three.
We recently entered into agreement with our superior officers, that's PBA Local Two Forty-nine. These are the officers that work in our corrections department at the jail. However, we renegotiated that agreement. Specifically, we revised that agreement to add one more year to that agreement. And we also revised some salary components. So when we did that, we had to reopen the agreement and add an addendum to that. And that's what we did, and that's what that resolution is about.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Was there one other?
Yeah, I three.
I three. Okay, this is, this is through our purchasing department. And this is a standard thing that we do when we award contracts through the state contract through our purchasing. And this allows us to not go through a procurement process that we normally would do. We go and go allow to bid, because we can award contracts through the state contract.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Luz. Do we have any other comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I am now closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to resolutions. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolutions I one through I thirteen for unanimous consent. Second. Probably move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director?
Deputy Director, I would like to move Resolutions I fourteen through I nineteen
Thank you.
for approval by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Are you a second?
Sure.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Echol?
Thank you, Director. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolutions I twenty through I twenty-four for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Question.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion to move Resolutions I twenty-five through I thirty-two for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We will now move on. Are there any questions from the media? Are there any questions from the media? Seeing none. We will now move on to public comment on non-agenda items. We will now begin. Each speaker, again, is limited to four minutes and may speak only once. When it is your turn to speak, please state your full name and address. I will refer to the sign-up sheet for the first person on public comment. Mr. Ken Pipes.
Ken Pipes, thirty-five, Mount Laurel Road, Haynesport. Living, madam, Director and members of the board. I've lived in New Jersey since nineteen seventy-eight. The first issue I addressed when I came to pastor at the Presbyterian Church in Burlington was a homeless man living in one of the Sunday School classrooms. The church leaders wanted to know if I could help them find a way to get the guy out, because they couldn't get it to leave. Homelessness preceded me in New Jersey, in Burlington County. I'm oftentimes blamed by people in Mount Holly for causing homelessness and recruiting people from out of state that have been made publicly alleged, and I've denied it, and it's still not true. But over the last twenty-five years of serving the homeless, a salted-like company which I'm president has served over fifteen thousand homeless people. We operate today about ninety living units. We have a staff of five social workers and six maintenance and construction staff and administrative staff of three. I got to tell you that when I heard that you were talking about building a shelter, I was thrilled. But I've also been disappointed along the way, because I can't get any information about what you're thinking. Personally spent over ten thousand of my dollars supporting a group of people who traveled on my airfare frequent flyer miles to San Diego, Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Antonio. We've traveled all around the Delaware Valley, up and down the state of New Jersey, talking to people about what they do and how they do it, so we could learn what we should or shouldn't be doing here in Burlington County and how we might be different. I came across a book called Designing Shelters for the Homeless. And one thing that the author of this book has said very clearly is that form follows function. Once you decide what you want to do, the architect then translates into physical structure something that you can achieve, what your goals or your purposes are in providing that building. This architect spent years studying the homeless in California and designed a building to serve one organization's need, but this book was written as a result of his surveys and his research. I would like to volunteer to help you decide what you should do, what you shouldn't do, to keep you from making mistakes. There's a number of us in Burlington County that could make contributions that would waste, that would save you wasting money and making tragic mistakes. Prepare a list of probably eighty questions that you need to answer. You may not want to answer them tonight, but believe me, at some point, if you open a shelter, you're gonna have to answer them, because we've had to go through this and answer them. None the least of which is, how do you handle COVID in a, in a shelter program, whether it's Margaret Shelter or individual apartments? Or how do you handle the maintenance and all the rest of that when you have to deal with people, interact with them who are infected? That's just one of the issues that you'll have to address. So I'm going to give this to you for your benefit. I think you know how to reach me. I'm willing to volunteer. I'm going to encourage you to allay public opinions about what should or shouldn't be done by hosting a community forum. Share with people openly what you're doing and what you're thinking and ask them to provide input and response. Quelling the opposition before it starts is important. I faced it in planning boards in about six different towns in this county over twenty years. Believe me, when the public is outraged, you well know that it doesn't go away quickly when you try to hide something that they believe you're not telling the truth about. I believe government should be open and honest and transparent. I encourage you to open up the process, let the sun shine, and let us breathe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, I have Fern Olet from Delanco. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Yes, Fern Olet.
Olet.
From Delanco.
Thank you.
I have two topics. One is Burlington County has done over the years farm preservation and setting land aside for the future so we can feed population. Does, do we have a master plan for additional farmland? Because we have all these warehouses going up in, you know, we, in towns, we city those as ratables, and so farmland's going in that direction in a lot of places in our county and in our state. And I'm wondering whether there is a master plan, whether at state level or at the county level, to preserve more farmland to, again, trying to avoid having all these warehouses or all our land go to asphalt in buildings. And then at some point in the future, we have to grow food, so that's one topic. And then the other one has to do with the landfill. I was fortunate to attend a session that was given by Anna Moore, who is in charge of, I guess, our recycling program here in the county. And in there, a comment was made that our current landfill will probably be maxed out around the year twenty forty. And sure, that sound for us, that may sound like a long ways off, but government moves slow. And is there a plan to, once that landfill is filled out or capped off, where do we go with our trash? It used to be each town had a dump or a trash area, and then we went to the camping system. And here in Mount Holly, or I guess it's East Hampton, where the back landfill, we fill that up pretty quick. And then we're up in the Columbus area, so we have that landfill. And again, twenty forty sounds like a long ways off, but it's, as far as government, it's right around the corner. Those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Olet. I'll ask that you leave your information with our Public Information Office, and we will have someone get back to you, but just to reassure you that we are focusing on farmland preservation and our Department of Solid Waste is definitely making sure that we have a plan for additional landfills. So we will have our Department of Public Information get back to you, okay, sir?
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next, we have Luz Luque.
Good morning. Elizabeth Harper, Live ninety-eight, Level Drive. That's my congratulations to Anna Evans for appointment in Haynesport as first community member. Thank you. Second, who owns, who maintains the Roman College of Pemberton, the ground and the building?
Who owns it? Who owns the college?
Not the whole, the whole area.
The college? Yeah. RCBC owned it. They still own it. They own the building, the land. Is that your question?
Oh, yeah. Who maintains that area?
So that would be a question.
Okay. People are asking, who maintains that? I go by. And I said, I can ask them, the freeholders. They got the answer.
The Commissioner Board?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I keep saying freeholder, man.
Yeah, but yeah, that will be a question for RCBC Board of Trustees.
And who elected the LaBent County Bridge Commission? Now you guys?
Who? I don't understand your question. You mean which, which commissioner is the liaison to the bridge commission?
Yeah. Now, who, who's, who's appointing?
So I would be the liaison to the bridge commission, but as far as the bridge commissioner, the bridge commission commissioners?
Yeah.
Are you asking about that body?
Yeah, them people.
That body is not appointed, is, is appointed, but I still don't understand. Do we appoint them? Is that your question?
You appoint, you appoint one people?
Well, we appoint when terms are up. If, once their terms are up, then we will appoint.
Oh, okay. That's, okay. That's not answering my question.
I'm so sorry, Luz. I didn't understand your question.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate, you know, for everyone, and I really, really appreciate a reorg meeting. Front row, I was like at Saturday at six AM. I got, you know, from the hospital at five fifty, I saw Richard Dow exhale through my heart. He gave me a ride, you know, to make it on time right here, front row, that is the best thing. We shared what, over sixteen times over? My post, it was shared sixteen times over. And that's the most posts I, it got shared over, over years. And there's two, two events. One is kind of Fire and Ice, it's my holiday salary. And the free, the free, of your bounty can't give it up. That's coming up soon.
Yes, the food drive is this Saturday.
And I would like to see a future, like, like an emergency service for, in case, like for elderly people or people, military people who have, you know, a very sick dog. If they need a minute there for fifteen, even to twenty years, I would like to have a service that they could call. If they have no insurance, they could call, you know, some help. And look, my friend's been there for seventeen years. Can you help me? You know, like that kind of service for this year.
You want to see emergency health services for pets? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, emergency health for pets, for people who have no money, like senior people, like, I'd like to see a program for this year to be pets like this, saving people's lives, and they, you know, love, they get love and care. And I'm glad to be here, got everyone's. And I glad that I'm allowed to listen to New Jersey Globe. I, I was saying, they get really interesting stories, but, you know, but they bother some people. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll see you at your next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Next for public comment, we have Anna Evans.
Hello. Anna Evans, sixty-three, Perry Drive, Haynesport. First of all, I'd like to congratulate John DeLuca on his retirement and thank Luz for giving me a shout-out. I have been appointed as the liaison to the county commissioners by the Haynesport Township Committee. So I will be trying to attend as many of your meetings as I can in order to bring you any questions that are given to me by the Haynesport governing body or to me by residents of Haynesport. You can also reach out to me if you personally have any questions about anything that is going on in Haynesport. I think you mostly have my contact details from previous contacts. I do have a couple of things in particular to mention tonight. It's interesting that my constituent Ken Pipes has already been up talking about the homeless shelter, because we do have some questions about that in Haynesport also. One is, is it a temporary homeless shelter or a permanent homeless shelter? Because I've seen it called both. So in the Coria Post article, it was called a permanent homeless shelter. In the agenda, it's called a temporary homeless shelter. So I just want a bit of clarity as to which it actually is going to be. And secondly, where in West Hampton is it planned to be located? The other thing I wanted to bring up is just letting you know that. that you can expect a letter from the mayor of Haynesport, uh, sorry, it's actually from the Haynesport engineers, but it's been commissioned by the mayor of Haynesport to request a review of the speed limit and weight restrictions on Haynesport Mount Laurel Road, thanks to recent new development and increased truck usage of that road. So the part of where it obviously, that is in Haynesport, we're looking at, maybe we can do something to reduce the traffic burden on residents. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again. And just really quickly, the, the emergency shelter, of course, it will be a permanent fixture. And I think the confusion is because, obviously, it will be temporary to help folks get, get in transition to wherever they're going. So I think the words are being used interchangeably, but obviously, it's going to be a permanent fixture, but the services will be for temporary, to help individuals temporarily. And we will look forward to your letter, and congratulations again. Uh, next, we have Alex Turner.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So, uh, it's a little bit of a challenge, uh, being rhetorical while suffering from a very painful injury, but here it goes. So, um, this is about a situation in the past, which, uh, situation in the past in which I was imprisoned in Burlington County for roughly a week, merely for speaking the truth and being honest. I feel like, uh, this is, uh, I feel like I'm being, not really being heard too well, like, uh, this is being pushed down the road, like I'm being ignored. We are nominally a secular nation, but clearly Christianity has a very strong influence. So I would like to talk about, um, one of the deadly sins, one of the seven deadly sins, which is pride and vanity. Pride and vanity. I'm going to, um, use a metaphor here, a metaphor. It's also, um, I'm referencing here an article from the satirical newspaper, The Onion. Probably sure a lot of you are familiar with that. This article is satirizing the attitude of the, I'm going to say the big five automakers in nineteen sixty-five, circa nineteen sixty-five. We have the big three now, of course. Back then, we had the big five or six or so. Well, the article is basically that, um, GM engineers are scoffing at the attempts of the Japanese to, the Japanese engineers to build a car. The point is, these, these, these American auto executives back then were ignoring the truth. They were laughing in the face of truth. And we all know that the Japanese were quite successful. So my metaphor here, of course, is, uh, I am comparing myself to those Japanese auto engineers. It has happened, it has happened in the past that, uh, that, um, I was ignored and, uh, completely under the rule and law of democracy, what was, was heard. This was in a previous instance of corruption someplace else. So, yeah, I'm going to, that's it, really. Remember, remember that, uh, that sin of pride. Remember that sin of vanity, and remember that we are all subject to the truth, and I'm sure you are aware. And I, I did state to you how I have truth with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for a public comment? Do we have anyone else for a public comment? Saying none, I am now closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Singh, do you have any comments?
Um, thank you. Um, congratulations, John DeLuca, on the retirement. And, um, Alex, while I, I don't understand all, you know, all the things that you're going through, but I appreciate, and your willingness to come here and speak, which is, it takes a lot to, to come up and, and speak in front of the governing bodies, and definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I too would like to thank Mr. DeLuca and wish him well in retirement, and thank him for his service. I'd also like to thank Kara and Andrew Outlin, Margaret McCuta, and the Wells Fargo Advisors Financial Network LLC for their very generous donations to our animal shelter. I know our health department and shelter folks will put that money to good use. I'd also like to thank our Department of Health for the invitation to our board to attend today's Consumer Bowl at Rancookas Valley Regional High School. This is a, an initiative to increase financial literacy that was actually started by the state back in the nineteen eighties. It's kind of modeled on, on the style of the game show Jeopardy. We had five high schools participate today, Burlington City, Burlington Township, Cherokee, Cinnaman, and Rancookas Valley Regional. I served as a, as a judge for one of the three sessions, and I'm happy to announce that Burlington City High School won today. They'll be moving on to a regional competition, and then after that, there's a statewide competition. But I'd like to really congratulate all five schools. They represented themselves very well, and the initiative to increase financial literacy is, is a great one. And then finally, we took note last, last year, the passing of Frank O'Harris in December. Uh, but around the new year, someone else passed away who I, I mentioned is part of Burlington County Sports Royalty. And that's Evelyn Lewis. You may know her as the mother of Carl, Carol, and Cleve Lewis, all world-renowned athletes, actually. But Ms. Lewis was a teacher in the Willenborough school system for twenty years. Her and her husband founded the Willenborough Track Club. They were a, a vital part of Willenborough, I remember, at the time that they were there. And I remember at the time of her passing, I posted it on social media, and there was quite a response from people who she had, who had taught her, who taught them when they were in school. And I just wanted to take note of her passing and to thank her for all that she did, not only in Willenborough, but to also put Burlington County on the map. And thank everybody for coming out today and sharing your thoughts with us, and get home safe with the slousy weather. And that's it, Director. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner O'Connell. Commissioner Eichel?
Thank you, Director. Thank you again, Captain Julico, for your many years of service to our county and its residents. Thank you to everyone for coming out and, and in this winter and being part of this process. Spotted lanternflies are a thing, and they are invasive, and now is the time to scrape the eggs off the trees. So if anyone thinks that they see a little bit of gum on the underside of a branch, about eight to ten feet up, there's no gum. It's a spotted lanternfly egg sac that's greatly often destroyed. We don't like to destroy natural things, but it's a basic species that's upon here. Please scrape those egg sacs off the trees. Thank you, that's all I have, Director.
Thank you so much. Deputy Director, please.
Thank you, Director. Jerome, you've got to help me. I forget the gentleman's name at OTC that I had the opportunity to go out and give the proclamation to on his retirement moving.
Mikey.
Mikey, right. Forty-four years, right?
Yes, with OTC, yes.
It, I got to tell you, it was one of the nicest things that I've been able to do over the years, that I've been here now. Forty-four years he spent at the Reclamation Center. Actually, you said he started, what, on newspapers or on the back of the truck? It was, yeah. The funniest thing was they threw a lunch, and I got to say to him, look, Mikey, you're giving everybody a free lunch. He went crazy, so, uh, thank you so much for allowing me to come out there. That was a, that was a great time. It really, um, it really hit me as far as, you know, human interest thing goes. Broken record here to thank all the directors and department heads for everything you do every day. Thanks for keeping our county one of the finest in the state, and thank you for making us all look good. I, I personally appreciate it. Have a good evening. Be safe going home.
Thank you. My, my comments will be quick. Mr. Olet, make sure we get your contact information, so we can have someone follow up with you regarding your questions and concerns. Again, congratulations to Mr. DeLuca on your retirement. Please enjoy. This Saturday, just want to remind everyone, we do have food distribution in West Hampton. It will be from ten AM to noon. Please spread the word. Food distribution this Saturday from ten AM to noon. Mr. Pipes, thank you so much for your information. Be sure to look at it. Happy to talk to you anytime about, uh, what we're, what we envision for the shelter. So that concludes my comments. I am now looking for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?